We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reading of the call.
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Trumpo County Board of Supervisors will meet at 7:00 PM on May 16th, 2022, in the county boardroom. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on May 5th, 2022, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Severson, county clerk.
Roll call.
Bridget Turner.
Here.
Stacy Klein.
Here.
Richard Sasha.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Here.
Heather Fritsch. Kevin Adams.
Here.
Dick Miller.
Here.
David Orsh.
Here.
John Austin.
Here.
Riley Foltz.
Here.
Robert Becker.
Here.
Dan Schreiner.
Here.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Here.
Jeanie Nutter.
Barely here. Come on here.
Ron Johnson.
Here.
Sixteen to one.
All right. I just made a note to myself, you should place your cell phones, including myself, place your cell phones on silent, so they don't interrupt the meeting. And no texting during the meeting, that's kind of distracting. And it could actually interfere, make your phone subject to open meeting law requirements or open records law. And I want to have attorney or corporate counsel explain more about that.
During a meeting, if somebody happens to be communicating in some form, whether it be email, text message, somebody could do a public records request of the communication that you're doing during the meeting, as it may pertain to official business. And of course, the only way to determine whether or not it is official business is for someone to review the information that you were communicating during that time. If it's strictly personal information, it is unlikely that it will be disclosed. Not 100%, but it's unlikely. Whereas if it is business in nature, then it can be disclosed. So just wanted to let everybody know that there is a possibility of that happening. So just be aware of it.
Okay. Open law, a meeting law requirements have been met with proper posting and notification. We have, I don't know, 11 item agenda. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Nutter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of minutes from last session. Looking for a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Sash, second by Ms. Turner.
Okay, there's going to be discussion.
Oh, go ahead.
There's just a slight correction.
Okay.
Under elections and appointments, letter B. It's worded where Heather Fritsch nominated Andy Todd, but it was the other way around.
Oh. Corrected as we speak. Okay. Any other corrections or additions? Turning out, all those in favor signify by saying aye to approve the minutes.
Aye.
Posed? Take care. Item five, looking for a motion to go into closed section. That's second, and you have to read the motion there, so. It's item five, item A, just read the closed session. Go ahead.
I make a motion, we go into closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.85, parant one, parant F, to consider financial, social, or personal information that involves confidential security measures related to county IT processes on county-owned devices.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nelson, and second by Mr. Schreiner. Any... Oh, we got to do a roll call right here, right? Roll call.
Kevin Adams.
Here.
Yes?
Yes.
Dick Miller?
Yes.
David Orsh?
Yes.
John Austin?
Yes.
Riley Foltz?
Yes.
Robert Becker?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Kellen Nelson?
Yes.
David Larson?
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Bridget Turner?
Yes.
Stacy Klein?
Yes.
Richard Sasha?
Yes.
Lori Severson?
Yes.
Andy Todd?
Yes.
And Heather's not here. Sixteen to zero.
I think the mics will still work, although we're in closed session. It won't go out of the studio, or it won't go out of the room here. Mics are on, just so you can, everybody can hear everybody. Samuel's group is not here yet, they'll be here, so we're going to go into status of opioid settlement process. Rick will bring us up to date on that.
All right. As many of you, if not all of you, know, we have been part of an opioid litigation lawsuit for some time. I wanted to give an update on it, but for those members who are maybe new and maybe don't know the background of it, I do want to give kind of a relatively brief. You'll learn quickly, I'm not usually brief. I'll give you a relatively brief background on the whole situation and how we got to where we're at now. So, got the slideshow to go along with it as we go along. If I can figure out how to get it moving.
Nope.
Okay. So the, this, our involvement started back in 2017. We were approached by a number of entities across the state about the possibility of joining a lawsuit against various opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers. Essentially, the gist of the claims were that they failed to disclose what they knew to be the addictive nature of opioids. And so, the theory was that they were going to try and gather as many government municipalities together to join in a class action lawsuit against a number of companies. And so, they went around the entire state, 71 of the 72 counties signed up to join. There's also a large number of cities and towns that also did join as well, too. This, the one that we're involved in is one of a large number of them across the entire country. So we're just going to focus on what our particular lawsuit that we're involved in is. So there are approximately 24 defendants, and the reason I say approximately is some of them are parent companies and their subsidiary companies. And, you know, I just counted the whole number of them, whether they are our parents or subsidiary. So there are approximately 24 defendants that were sued. Again, the plaintiffs were all the municipalities, some in Wisconsin, some in other states as well, too. So, on the slide, it shows that, let me back up. So the process started in 2017. We signed on with law firms, signed a fee agreement with them. They took care of everything on our behalf. They reached out to the departments within the county to gather some information, so that they knew how to divide up what the damages would be should we get to some point down the road that we needed to. And so after they gathered all that information, through some court processes, we got to the point where a number of defendants wanted to settle. And so the ones that are listed on this particular slide are ones that have, that we're in the process of settling with right now. Again, I indicated there's manufacturers, distributors, and retailers. So three distributors and two manufacturers have, did approach the, our attorneys, and wanted to settle. And again, this is settling the class action, so this is all for all the plaintiffs. And so, for about the last year and a half, the process of trying to reach a settlement agreement has been going on. As you can imagine, with a large, large number of plaintiffs, it's taken some time in order to get to that point. So, oh, these are the law firms that, that we have signed fee agreements with. Andy Phillips, some of you might be familiar with him, he does a lot of work with the WCA. He used to be part of Von Briesen, and now he's part of a different firm. I'm not sure how to pronounce the name, so I'm not going to try. Erin Dickinson, she's the primary contact that we've had with the county. So she's the one that we've been dealing with most. Paul Hanley, he's the one on the national level. He is really the one that got this, got this off the ground, so to speak. He unfortunately did pass away while this process was going on, but his firm continues to be actively involved in it. So he signed a fee agreement for 25% of whatever the recovery is, very standard percentage in these types of cases. And again, this all came before the board previously, and was approved, and it was signed, and moved on from there. So, again, those five companies wanted to settle. So this is the global settlement. This isn't anything specific to Wisconsin or Trumpo County. So, the total settlement is $26 billion that these five companies are agreeing that they're going to pay over a period of time. The distributors, they're agreeing to pay $21 billion over 18 years, and manufacturers are going to pay $5 billion over nine years. And so how that breaks down to is, don't want to bore you with the numbers, but $22.8 billion is going to go to the states and local governments that are part of our lawsuit. And keep in mind, this is one of multiple lawsuits across the country that are dealing with these same issues. The difference between the 26 and the 22.8 is, there was an attorney fee contingency fund set up, and then other administrative fees fund that was set up, that we'll talk about here in just a little bit. Wisconsin was, was awarded essentially just under, just over $402 million. That next line there talks about 30% of the funds go to state and 70% to local governments. I just wanted to touch on that briefly, because it's, that's pretty, pretty significant for Wisconsin. So what happened was that each state had to determine, the legislature had to determine each state, how much is the state going to get and how much are the local municipalities going to get. And if the legislature could not come to a decision on that, there was a default provision. And if I remember correctly, it was 60 to the state and 40 to the, to the local governments. So the state of Wisconsin legislature, later legislature, literally passed a law, it's actually a state statute, that the state will get 30% and local governments will get 70%. That is, of all the states across the entire country, we are by far the biggest to the local governments than any other state in the country. So I thought that was pretty significant for the state of Wisconsin. So I thought it was pretty cool. But again, it's, it's state law now, so that, that can't be changed without some significant act. So in any event, so $402 million coming to the state of Wisconsin. Everybody who gets money, 85% of that has to be used to abate the opioid, oh, yeah, I can't talk, opioid epidemic. And I'm going to go over that in more detail in a few minutes, but that's just the numbers I'm throwing out there. In addition to the money, some of the defendants agreed that they were going to do certain things. Johnson &amp; Johnson will stop marketing and selling opioids for 10 years. They were one of the more significant ones. They were going to open their trial data to medical research, so they could take a look at the addictive nature of opioids and see what they can do to combat that. And then there is going to be much more oversight in regards to shipments of opioids when they're shipped from one place to the other. So those are a couple of things that were involved in it as well. So again, that took about a year and a half to come to terms on that. Nobody, of course, is admitting guilt, but they are going to agree that they're going to pay the money. So the approval process was that the state attorney general had to approve it first. And once that approval happened, then it went to the legislature to figure out how it's going to be divided. And then after that, each municipality had to approve the settlement that they were going to get. And all that had to happen by January 2nd of this year. So that is all done, it's all been approved. We are now to the point now, we're waiting for money to be distributed. So now I'm going to go into what is Trumpo County going to get out of all this. Trumpo County is going to be getting, as a gross amount, just over $900,000. And so what they did is, all the information that each municipality provided to the attorneys, they took that, and I don't know all the details of it, but they created a formula based on information that they received, and they assigned a percentage to each municipality. And based on that percentage of the 400 and whatever million, that's how much we were awarded. So this is a percentage of that total amount of money that came to, came to Wisconsin. And I say it's gross, the $900,000, because that does not take out the 25% for attorney's fees. And again, I'm going to get to that in a moment. So now, again, as I indicated before, it's payable over 19 years for some, and nine years for others, in annual payments. There are potential options that we can accelerate the payments, in other words, get the money sooner. And again, I'm going to go over that in a moment as well, too. But the way it works is, we cannot put it in our general fund. We have to create a separate account, that's called the opioid abatement account. So any money that we receive has to go in there, and can only be used for specific purposes. And we have to submit an accounting of what we use it for every year. So again, those are just some general things, which I'll go over more in a moment. As I indicated, the 25% for attorney's fees has to come out of there. As of right now, we are being asked to put aside 20% into an escrow account. And so each payment we receive, 20% of that will go into an escrow account. The reason they're doing 20% right now is because they took that original amount and set aside an amount for attorney's fees and administrative costs. They're going to be asking for money out of that account first, and then whatever they don't get out of that account, then they'll get out of the 20% that we're setting aside. They, they may or may not take that full 20%. They may or may not come back for the other 5%. It just remains to be seen. Again, with the sheer number of law firms out there, it's going to be used up pretty quickly, so. So again, if they take the full 20%, our net amount is going to be roughly $720,000 that Trumpo County will get.
Could you say the net amount again? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Nope, $720,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. So the payment process, that's where we're at right now. Everything has already been approved, the whole processes have been, have been done. So now we're just waiting for the payment process to occur. So there's a two-step process. There is an administrator that's been appointed that runs that on the national level. They get the initial payments from the companies who are agreeing to settle. And then that administrator then disperses it to the various local government agencies. So again, payments have already started going to the national, yeah, to the national administrator, but they were just recently appointed, so they're still setting up their whole, how is this going to work thing? And so until that is set up, we won't see any money. They're hoping in the next few months that we're going to start seeing some payments come in, but just kind of depends on what happens. I indicate there, Brown Greer is the administrator. I just threw that in there, so in case anybody wanted to know. Payments likely will come in two, two times, in July and August, each year, based on who the, who the individuals or who the company is. And then eventually, we will get a schedule of what our payments are going to be and when they will come in. So those are things that are going to, going to come down the road. As I indicated before, there are options of potentially getting our most or full settlement upfront, or at, on the front end, instead of waiting for the 19 or nine years for the payments over a period of time. And so there's a line on there, might be hard to read, the settlement monetization or securitization, that is what that's referring to. So there are companies out there that are, that will be willing to give us the money, and then they will take the payments and the risk over a period of time. It's going to cost us, of course, when that time comes, because, you know, they're taking on a risk that we're not going to have anymore. Because it, there's no guarantee that these companies will be around for the full 19 years or the nine years that these payments are supposed to be made. And so there is a risk involved with it. On May 31st, there's going to be a virtual meeting that's going to have some more discussion and details and what those options are going to be. But the board will ultimately have to make the decision at some point, based on the information presented, whether you want to do that or not. And so we'll come back and revisit that issue down the road. But just wanted to let you know that that is an option. Also in July, there's going to be, they call it a summit in Stevens Point, and that is going to be where people can attend and look at what are the options? What can you use this money for? And the reason that's going to be a summit is because my next slides are going to be telling you what this can be used for, in a very, very brief version. So there is a document out there, it's, if you ever hear Exhibit E, that's what it's referred to, is Exhibit E. Those are the approved uses for this money. It's about 25 pages long. And so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go over in about five minutes what you can use these things for, knowing that there's all sorts of more subcategories that it can be used for, so. So what can it be used for? There are three main areas, treatment-related, prevention, or miscellaneous or other strategies that you can use it for. Treatment, some of it's self-explanatory. You can use it to treat the actual opioid use disorder. The nice thing about the use is, if there's a co-occurring disorder, whether it be substance abuse or mental health-related, you can treat both of them, and you can use the funds under this for both. As long as you have an opioid use disorder in the first place, you can treat the associated ones as well. So those are obviously the main part of the category, but there's some other areas in there, too. If someone is going through some kind of treatment program, and they need assistance in maybe securing housing, transportation, education, childcare, it can be set up to use funds for those purposes as well, as long as they're, again, going through a treatment program related to opioid issues. Trauma that might have led to their addiction in the first place, again, some examples of violence, sex assault, human trafficking, those types of things, that treatment for those issues, again, I don't want to read them all to you, but recovery services, support, prevention services, and additional training. So that's on the treatment-related side of it. Again, there's about five or six pages just dedicated to this particular aspect of the treatment portion of it, in this Exhibit E. If anyone wants Exhibit E, I'll email it to you. I just didn't want to print off that many copies, because it's such a lengthy document. Yeah?
So I see there, oh, sorry. Money can be used for diversion, outreach, recovery courts. So we, that's already in existence here. So can we funnel some of that money into our existing programs to support what we have going, like our diversion court?
As long as it is opioid abuse-related.
Right, right, right.
Correct, yes.
Right, right.
Yes, you can use it, because you don't have to necessarily invent the wheel on everything. You can use it to supplement things that you're already doing, maybe kind of add some different facets to it or something.
Right, okay, okay, good, thank you.
I believe that one of the, one of the aspects is that you can also actually, for anybody who's incarcerated in their jails, that you can offer programming to them while they're incarcerated, before they're released as well, too. I think that's an allowed use, so. So again, really brief, that's the treatment-related portion of it. Prevention-related, again, to training people in the community on ways to either combat, or how to, how to best deal with those individuals who are dealing with opioid-related addictions. Campaigns to the public and trying to prevent people from, from going down that road in the first place. Training medical providers on how to identify or find alternative to opioid treatments as well, which that's kind of gaining a lot of momentum as well. And then the drugs that are out there to combat these overdoses. Expanding that, training more individuals. I believe, and don't quote me on this, but I believe the people who are able to train in order to administer those, I think that has expanded now, so there are additional, additional people who can do it. I know our jail staff are allowed to do it now as well, too, so. So those are things where we can, we can expand and use the money for those types of programs. Again, very brief, there's a number of pages related to that one. And then just the other miscellaneous ones, training for law enforcement first responders on best practices, how to utilize, what things to do. Secondary trauma for those emergency responders, dealing with the situation where they might deal with an overdose. Maybe the person doesn't survive, and then that individual has to somehow deal with that, those things that are going on. So that's secondary trauma, so those are ways as well. Again, research, barriers to treatment options, again, just a number of different ways to look at and use the funds for those. So again, those are the, those are the things we can use it for. Again, I know I went over it really quickly, and it's very brief, but it goes into a lot more detail in Exhibit E. So when that money comes in, those are the sole reasons that we can use it for. Again, 85% of it has to be used for actual, these are things. The other portion of it can be administrative costs, if there are, we have to pay somebody to administer some, some kind of a program, or whatever the case might be. And so again, those are the, those are the ways that we are able to do it. Again, we have to do an annual accounting to the state. I think it's the Department of Justice and some kind of executive committee of some kind. But monies that came in and monies that went out, what we use them for. So they do have to, I don't think they approve it, but they do have to make sure that it fits within the parameters, so, yeah.
Could you send me the exhibit?
Yep.
And, and Paul, I'm guessing you will create the account for this and manage that money? And then I just need some clarification on the, talking about expediting the money, so that, so would some other entity give us the $9,000 and...
They, with the net amount is what they would, would likely give. But yes, I mean, and again, it could be portion or all of it. But what, some company would step forward, and they would ultimately pay what our portion of the settlement is, and then we would assign it, the payments, to them. Again, obviously, we're going to have to pay for that, that's not going to be a free thing. But in any event, then they take on that risk of getting all the payments, and then we're out of it, and then they get the payments as they come in on an annual basis.
Seems kind of...
So that, this is, that's a very common tool out there.
It is?
Yeah, that's not an uncommon thing at all.
Okay.
Especially for the larger segments like that.
But, but we have to pay them a fee for managing the money?
Well, there's going to be some kind of a fee associated with them, assuming the risk that we're no longer going to have, so, yep. Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming they're going to offer like 80 cents on the dollar, or something.
So you, when you know more about that?
Correct.
You'll explain it to us?
Yep. The May 31st is going to be a virtual meeting where we're going to have a discussion specifically about that topic.
Okay, thank you.
Rick, is there a timeframe that you have to have this money used up, or is it...
No.
There is not.
Nothing.
Nope. Yep, you can use it whenever. Especially because it's going to be out so long. Which, the other part of it is, you know, these are five of the defendants. You know, they're still defendants that we haven't settled with. You know, we don't know where that's going yet, there might be more settlements, there might be a trial, we don't know where that's going yet. So those are things that we're still going to have to come before the board to answer those questions, once we get offers or proposals to us as well, so. I think that was my last one. So unless anybody has any questions, that's, that's kind of an overview. So we're just right now waiting for, knowing when the payments are going to start. We're hoping that they're going to start here in the next few months, so.
Any questions, Rick? Yeah, thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Yep.
We'll go on with Samuel, Samuel's group, oh, he's not here yet. We'll go to item 6A, seeing as they would have, Brian Riley here. That's the resolution for the... Well, it's highway, it's more than highways.
How much of the resolution do you want me to read?
Uh, not the whole thing.
I usually read the first whereas, and then just a little bit of the, therefore be it resolved. It's only 30 pages long.
Let's just do the first whereas, and then down the, therefore be it resolved.
Okay. Whereas on March 21st, 2022, the County Board of Supervisors of Trumpo County, Wisconsin, the county, by a vote of at least three-quarters of the members-elect, adopted an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation promissory notes in amount, in an amount not to exceed $6,600,000 for public purposes, including paying the cost of construction and improvements of highways and bridges, the acquisition of vehicles and other equipment, IT improvements, improvements to county facilities, and public grounds projects, collectively the project. That's enough? Let me get to the last one, then, if I can find it. That's kind of long, too, but then it's just, therefore be it resolved by the County Board of Supervisors of, of the county, that we award the notes, ratify the notice of sale, and note the terms of notes. And it's signed by John Austin.
I make the motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Ms. Nutter, second by Ms. Turner. Further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. John, uh, no, Mr. Miller. You got Mr. Adams on the name in front of you.
We'll move him, we'll move him over.
I would like to spend a few minutes talking about debt as it pertains to this particular project. And I think that's where we're at, is that right, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
Okay. Maybe not all of you know Al Renka, and some of you will get to know him. He's the highway commissioner here. Alan, Al is a very significant, big advocate for good roads in the county. I've often told department heads, that is their job, to advocate for, for their particular area. And he has been very aggressive, and I give him credit for having convinced the board to spend significant amount of money that, over what has been spent in the past. And he has pointed out, with very definite clarity, that we have neglected highways in this county. And we have, due to, due to financial issues over the years
And we have, due to, due to financial issues over the years that have prohibited us from spending a lot of money on, on highways. This particular project, or this particular bond issue involves over four million dollars, I believe, for highway.
Four point three million.
Okay. Al has pointed out that we need to be putting five million dollars a year at current prices. And those of you on the Highway Committee certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, into infinity, I think, because of the, the need to keep updating the roads. We have taken on in this county, and I say we because I, I was on this board for several years, two big projects, though I didn't vote on the first one. The, the Justice Center at forty-three million dollars plus. We have significant debt in this county at this time. If you look at, again, correct me, Paul, if I'm mistaken. At five million dollars a year, we're talking about financing it for ten years. Is that correct? Are you talking about the present one? This present one. This one is ten. Ten years. Right. Okay. Now, if we spend five million dollars each year for the next ten years, that's fifty million dollars. That means that we will be paying in, for every year, we'll be paying in five hundred thousand dollars plus interest to cover the cost of that bonding. At the end, again, at the end of ten years, you add, you take ten times five hundred thousand, you get five million dollars. We have, we collect a little, a little over fifteen million dollars from our local property taxes to cover the costs of operation of this county. And we have many other sources, but we, this is what comes in from the property taxpayers. And Paul tells me that also includes previous bonding. So we are paying a part, and I don't know how much.
Bring that with.
But say, but whatever. It's significant. And as we pay back the forty-three million dollars, we'll be paying back, again, checking with Paul, between two and a little over three million dollars a year there. So at the end of ten years, we have that amount we're paying in annually, three million dollars, we'll call it, plus over five million dollars for highways. So we're talking about eight million dollars. We're talking about forty percent of our tax money we're raising is going to go for bond retirement and interest. I just want that to settle in for a second with everybody here. So we, we have some questions to ask, you know. We have two major infrastructure programs underway in a sense. And I, I wanna add that these are needs. These are neglects over the years. We looked at Justice Center two or three, three times prior to it being approved by this, by this board, or that board at the time. So we have needs. So I'm not downplaying the needs at all. But how do we pay for this? And then we have several projects that have been advocated or suggested for using the COVID monies at over, a little over four million dollars sitting there, I think, for other projects. We've already committed ourselves, in a sense, to the Justice Center and potentially more road construction. And I would just suggest that, as, as some of the other people here have suggested, we don't touch that money because we may need it. We've got major commitments. And I think as a board, we never wanna touch extra money if we have major commitments that we're not sure we can cover. So we have to be tuned into that. What can we afford? This is what we always have to be looking at, and we don't always do that as a board, I don't think. We need to decide what we can afford and we, then we set priorities. Do we have a, the board has never approved, to my knowledge, a long-term plan to deal with highway repair and upgrading. Al Renka has come in with a plan, but this board has, is funding it year by year. This is not good planning, not good planning. We know that we may be able to extend our, the amount of money available in the future due to the infrastructure money from the federal government, but I don't think we know how much. Anybody?
Well, I know it was a hundred million for, I can look it up.
But I'm talking about for this county.
For, in the state of Wisconsin for broadband. I can look it up what highway is. But we haven't got that money yet. It hasn't, you know, that's coming from.
But I don't think the Highway Department knows.
No one knows.
What's there.
No.
So that may be, that may be coming.
Hundred million is for broadband.
That's what, but we don't get it all.
Right. No, that's for the state.
You know, and I think what it comes down to is this, this county has not, over the years, done a good job of budgeting year-round. I was involved in budgeting for many years and, and the process starts in the summertime and then it's approved in November, if I'm not mistaken. Budgeting is a year-round thing and, and, and we just, we haven't done that. But I, we've still come back to this. How are we gonna pay for this? How are we gonna plan in the future to deal with this? I can make a suggestion in terms of, in terms of the money for the Highway Department. I'm not gonna, and it wouldn't, wouldn't make people happy. But I guess, I guess as you vote on this issue, bear that in mind. That what are we gonna do in the future? And if we approve this tonight, we need a plan for the future. And we need to do this between now and the time we have to, before Al Renka has to plan what he's gonna do next year. Because he starts when, Mr. Chair? When does he start planning?
Planning, we're like three years out, planning three years ahead. You have to have these plans in place for the engineering, so it's like three years ahead.
So, so he's planning without any money. He doesn't know if he's gonna get any money. And that's right, I think that's right, isn't it?
Yes.
He doesn't know. So we have to, he has to know. We have to let him know what he's gonna have ahead of time. Cause we're now, he has all this plan, this work planned for this particular work season, I think, without having any money. He doesn't know if he's gonna have any money. So, you know, bear in mind, as you vote for this tonight, what are we gonna do next time if we approve it tonight? I'm not suggesting we not approve it by any means, but we need to look in, towards the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think Mr. Riley can kinda shed light on how this works and how we. I know at Exact Finance, we wanted to keep our mill rate from just jumping all over and maintain it steady. And Mr. Riley can probably explain that better and how we could probably extend it into the future.
I don't have a magic wand, so I'll just get that out of the way. This is certainly an issue that many jurisdictions, not just counties like Tremblow County, are dealing with under the levy limit regime that's been in place since, I think, Levy two thousand four, Collect two thousand five. So we're essentially fifteen years into what I'll call that financial experiment and budgets are stretched and capital is the, probably the number one thing that has transitioned from pay-as-you-go to borrowing and paying over time because debt service for general obligation debt is not subject to the levy limit. So you're able to have some relief in that regard because generally speaking, most places have maxed out their capital line items and are starting to also struggle with some of the staffing issues, especially for public safety, emergency services, et cetera. So you're not unique in that regard. I'm all for long-term planning. That does set up for success. Of course, no board can bind a future board other than things like debt. It's one of the only things that you can bind a future board with your decisions. So the exercise should be continuous. You should always be planning. There should be some thought about what the estimated expenditures are going to be for, for the Highway Department over the next few years. And we're happy to run scenario analysis or engage in a more robust financial planning exercise. That is something that we work with clients all across the state and different sized jurisdictions, whether they be counties, cities, villages. You know, long-term financial planning from five to ten years can be a big benefit. And there needs to be some vision of the future. You don't have unlimited borrowing capacity either. So when you issue general obligation debt, you can issue up to five percent of your equalized value. That is really not a major impediment for a county with a tax base your size. To some degree, it becomes where do you wanna see the tax rate at the local level? Because the longest you can amortize general obligation debt is twenty years from its date of issue. You could refinance it ad infinitum between day one and day twenty, but it must be fully retired by day twenty. So you have to live within the parameters and limitations that are in front of you under state law. And so, again, yeah, to the extent that you can do a, you know, a fine job of planning, that helps. I suspect that if I were to show you what it looks like to borrow five to ten million dollars every single year, there will be a point at which you won't want to, you won't want the tax impact associated with that. And so part of this is how do you pay cash for things? How do you reasonably borrow for things in a long-term and sustainable fashion? You know, I don't, I don't know that it would be ad infinitum. Eventually, you'll, you'll catch up, I suspect. And also, I think we find too that when major capital improvements are made, especially the infrastructure, the money that you are using in cash is going to higher and better, the, better uses than just putting Band-Aids on things. It tends to have a longer life. So through the cycle of improvements and reconstruction, you're likely getting more bang for your buck all around. So, you know, I, I don't have a magic solution for you other than looking at different scenarios and looking out over time as to what your needs are from a capital financing position and trying to build a plan that you think sets you up for success going forward. You know, I, I, you have to answer for yourselves kinda what that tipping point is in terms of what you're willing to levy. But again, that vision into the future is gonna give you a sense as to how soon that's gonna come and, and give you a better overall solution. And also had talked a little bit with Paul about, from a process standpoint, if you go back in time, in fact, this resolution alludes to the authorizing resolution that was adopted by the three-quarters vote of the County Board. That is not a, that is not a binding resolution in that it commits you to issue debt. It's just merely one step in the process. And that could be done at the time that the budget is adopted. Those resolutions stand for five years from their date of approval. So anytime within that five-year window, the debt can be issued. So you've got valid authorization from the board that also adopts the budget. So even though you don't have money in hand, you've essentially given your imprimatur to moving forward with a debt issue that funds the capital that you also approved at the time of your budget. So not everybody does that. That is fairly logical. If you're looking for more certainty in terms of committing to department heads and staff that you're in a position to not just approve a budget, but also authorize some of the funding that goes along with it. You could also adopt a debt issue at that time too, to physically get the money. But as soon as you close, the interest clock starts ticking. So we've tried to align the debt issuance process, the physical aspect of it, with when the money's gonna be spent to minimize your cost of capital, so to speak, to have some alignment there. But there are a number of ways to do things procedurally, and that might be one that, you know, better puts the board on record as to giving its imprimatur to fund the capital costs that are approved in the budget all at the same time.
Getting back to that, Ms. Nutter.
On Tammy Baldwin's website, she talks about how much money is coming to Wisconsin from the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And there's a paragraph here that says, "The bipartisan infrastructure legislation is expected to provide Wisconsin with over five billion in federal highway formula funding over the next five years for highways and bridges." And she also talks about nine hundred, nine hundred ninety-six point eight million coming through that infrastructure bill. There's a hundred and forty-two million dollars to clean up our water mess with, you know, lead in pipes and so forth. So there's a lot of money coming to Wisconsin somehow. I mean, the Highway Department will know first because this, this also talks about the Department of Trans, money flowing through the Department of Transportation. So there's a significant amount of money, and a hundred, as I said, for broadband, so. But it was my understanding when we looked at this resolution a year ago, we talked about a total amount of twenty-five million dollars going to the Highway Department. And Al came with a plan of where every penny of that money was gonna go. But we felt strongly that this board could not commit to twenty-five million dollars because we were only gonna be here for one more year, which is why we're doing this on a yearly basis because we are, we may not all be here two years from now. And I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but I think that was how we decided to do this incrementally, giving money to the Highway Department. And I, I think Al Renka has detailed, I mean, you're then the Highway Department. You're on the, I mean, detailed plans for how every penny is gonna be spent.
Yeah, he actually has plans out for years, but you have to have a minimum of three. So they go up five years and better. Anyway, do you have any more you wanted to say just about the resolution itself?
I will similarly not make reference to the thirty-five page resolution, so I'll keep it high-level detail. If anybody has questions. That decision has largely been made by way of binding bids that were received this morning. So, yeah. Sure. Happy, happy to get into that. That's a good segue, since you brought up the bids. So as, as I alluded to the last time I was here, just to kinda set the stage for coming back here in May, you know, going back a number of, of months, the initial authorization was adopted through three-quarters vote of the County Board. Then we proceeded towards really the, you know, subsequent phase of the borrowing process to put documents together, structure the debt issue, put a disclosure or an offering statement together, that's called an official statement, and then also engaged with the third-party rating agency, and I'll walk you through that here in a little bit. So the culmination of that was really today in terms of going out and soliciting binding bids for purchase of the bonds. And to the point about the decision, it's really, to a large degree, based upon interest cost. And, and in this case, we state all the parameters to the, the bond dealers who are looking to purchase bonds. And we tell them, here are the parameters, and award will go to the lowest interest cost proposal. So we got eight bids, which my view is being very good. We also, also an attractive debt issue. You're, you have a strong rating. We're ten years in term, so we're not really long. And you've got good maturity sizes as well. So the best bid came from Bankers Bank out of Madison. They came in just under three percent, two-nine-six. That is a little higher than our original estimates, but our original estimates were based on the market at that time. So if I were to show you a chart, you would see a meaningful movement in intermediate and long-term rates during that time. So we're about a half a percent over those estimates. I don't have control over interest rates. I, I wish I did cause certainly that's one thing that has gone up along with every other price, you know, around us. So in any event, we view this as being favorable. You can see the list of bidders as you go later in the, in the handout. We got a very good representation. Really, these are almost all the players that you would typically see bidding on municipal obligations in the state of Wisconsin. There's a handful of others that I don't see, but this is a, a good set. And you can see the bidding is rather tight, especially after the, the winning bid. You know, right around three oh five, there's a big cluster there. So the market's been pretty stable the last two weeks, but through the first quarter of the year in April, rates are up materially. There's no doubt. But still, three, ten-year money at three percent, I view as very reasonable. We caught the bottom, I'd say, pretty close with the Justice Center financing. And rates have generally ebbed up since. So. We were able to also garner an additional roughly eighty-five thousand dollars in proceeds available for, for project funds. So we put the, put the issue together, we capitalized it, assuming certain levels of cost. We try to be pretty conservative, but so those numbers came in better than anticipated. And so we were able to issue the same amount of debt, but push a little more into the project fund. So those are a little fewer dollars that you have to come up with next year. But as we were all very well aware, prices are volatile. So even though I'm sure some things are locked in, I suspect costs will be a little higher for your, for your projects than you anticipated. I will talk a little bit about the ratings, since that came up in our, in our last discussion. The county's rating was affirmed, that is, it is the same as it was before this debt issue at double A minus. And if you look through on a comparative basis, the language that was in the last rating report versus this one, it's very much the same. In fact, we spent almost, you know, we spent very little time on the call just because it was pretty extensive when we did the Justice Center financing and certainly a lot of the same questions and just wanting to catch up a little bit on where the last fiscal year ended and where things stand through almost half a year here thus far. So the things that are in your control, again, they view favorably, your financial position, the general fund balance. Generally speaking, your break even or positive variance on your budget, the level engagement between your staff, the committees, and the board as a whole in terms of where things stand throughout the year with the budget. The things that aren't in your control, you tend, you're, you're a rural county and, you know, your, your socio-demographic profile, they look at on a statistical basis. Things like, you know, median income, those sorts of things are a little lower than state and national average. But that's not uncommon for a rural county and, and, you know, you do your best to try to promote economic development, but that's not something you have immediate control over. The things that you do are, tend to be viewed favorably through the rating lens. Things like, language like strong and very strong. So you should certainly hold yourself in high regard with respect to the things that you can control. As I had mentioned, rates were up a little bit from our estimates. So I think we were estimating a little under seven hundred thousand dollars annually to the point of, you know, borrowing money, there is interest. So we're a little over seven hundred thousand annually, about seven hundred and fifteen versus about six hundred and ninety-five estimate. But that's marginal in comparison to a six million dollar plus borrowing. So tax impact-wise, we're basically right on top of where we had estimated, given that nominal change from, from our preliminary to final. The resolution you have in front of you, when, once adopted, this will be a, essentially a binding purchase and sale agreement between you as the issuer and the purchaser of the bonds, and then we will look to close in early June. So you'll get all the money. It'll come into the county's coffers and be available for spending immediately. Some of that, I suspect, will also be reimbursement because you probably have spent some, some dollars here thus far. So I will pause there and entertain questions.
Is there any questions, O'Brien?
I have a question, but not of Brian.
Oh.
He did a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. What are the chances that that four million plus in highway monies will be utilized this work season?
Oh, that, most definitely. He's already.
It will all be, it will be depleted.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But you understand, I think, as a board, that if we have to give him three years' lead time for a project, we have to do some serious darn planning in terms of money, where we're going to get this money, because this is every-year business. This is nuts. Brian pointed out that it's going to be almost $700,000 a year. This is the first year, and the 25 years, or the $25 million that Al talked about several years ago, he's talking about $5 million every year now, not every, not 25 million total.
No.
So, $700,000 times 10, that 10th year, is $7 million. We're going to be having to raise more money to cover our bonding than we do to cover the day-to-day expenses. So, just bear that in mind as we move ahead. This is serious business, guys. So, I think, I don't know whether I'm going to suggest this to the exec finance, but we have to get on top of this business, because we cannot afford this. At $700,000, or $7 million plus our construction out back here, we're talking, again, half, half of the money we raise is going to go for the payment of our bonds. It's going to, that total is going to raise county property taxes by a significant amount.
It shouldn't, because we did, it didn't raise the mill rate at all.
It's going to raise taxes to somebody. I don't care mill or not. What happens is properties are reevaluated along the way.
It'll raise your taxes as your valuation goes.
But everybody pays more.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I get that.
So, if you have a, if you're paying $3,000 now, it's going to be more like $5,000. And all the other expenses in this operation are going up. We know that over the years, healthcare, paper products, look at utilities is going to cost. What is it going to cost for this new building? Utilities are going to be significant, and there will be more staffing that'll be required. So, you know, I'm going to throw my hands up and say, "Hey, give me help here," you know, "Let's look ahead here, let's plan." Thank you.
Good thoughts. Any other comments?
What do we currently have for outstanding general obligation debts? Or do we know the timeline, too?
You can answer that.
Off the top of my head, I won't venture an immediate guess, because it'll be wrong. You know, I tend to look at things on what's your total available borrowing capacity, and I think with the last, with the Justice Center project, we were somewhere in the half-range, but that was a big bite at the apple, so to speak. Prior to that, it was significantly more borrowing capacity available. So, you're certainly not in any, you know, objective threat of, you know, being unable to borrow. That hasn't tended to be an issue. But I can absolutely give you that exact number when I am back at the office. I can shoot that to Paul.
I was just going to look for our last financial statement. Now that I got it.
Yeah, that'll be dated, though, Paul, because.
This will be '20, '20.
Well, I'm just saying, because you've set your levy effectively, I look through the end of this fiscal year, plus we just issued $6 million, so you're going to be a few million off, because that's how much you're retiring, a sizable amount every year.
Heather.
Maybe you already, I'm sure you already looked at this, but since we have to plan at least three years out, did you look at trying to apply for what you would need for three years, so we could lock in the interest rates now? Because we all know the interest rates are going to, they're predicting they're going to skyrocket in the near future. And so, I don't want to do a yearly plan right now and then ask for $6 million again next year, when it could be, who knows, 10%, 12% interest. I really think that if there's a way we can look at financing even that three-year chunk that he needs to plan for, can we look at trying to lock in a good interest rate now so that we're not doing this yearly thing, and we have no idea what the market's going to do with the way everything is heading right now?
Good thought. Any other comments?
Well, and that's what we tried to do. It was the vote of the previous board that, or it was the opinion of the previous board. I mean, we looked at just doing $25 million right from the get-go, so there was, you know, because just driving here today down D, I went through two gravel areas where they had to put new culverts in. So, and that road was just redone. So, I'd be happy to, I was in favor of doing the whole $25 million, but then the idea came up, we can't make that decision as a board, because there'll be a new board, and I didn't really buy into that, but.
I'm just extremely concerned about where interest rates are heading and doing this yearly plan.
And they've been consistently low with our projects, correct? I mean, this interest rate is lower than my student loan rate, which I would love to have 2.97 for my student loan.
It's definitely the one thing none of us have any control over.
Right, nobody knows.
Right.
It has been fairly favorable the last few years, which is unbelievable.
It has been, and, you know, borrowers have been beneficiaries of that, investors have certainly not, so.
Yeah, but that's going to change. We know it's going to change, no matter how you look at it, you can see it, and look at what's going on in the world. It's going to change. There's no, "Well, we got lucky the last two years." We're not going to get lucky the next two. So, I'm going to tell you that, it's the truth.
No, we don't.
Mr. Becker.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a statement. Dick implied that the previous commissioners weren't doing anything. They worked their butts off trying to get money. The board and the chair would not give them any money. This is why we're in this hole. And we're, they put us here, and now it's up to us to try to get out of it. Those commissioners, I mean, highway commissioners, they were trying to get money. They didn't get money, we didn't do any blacktopping on any roads for five to eight years, nothing. Thank God the townships were there, and the cities, and the villages that had us do some work, it kept that plant going, it kept the county highway department solvent. But it was those boards that just shut a blind eye to the bad roads. They were told about it.
Yeah.
They were said, "We should get a plan together down the road so we can keep the highway system up here," because we do have an extensive highway system. And they did nothing. And they tried their best, and we had some good commissioners.
I just want to go on record, I do agree that we need some serious work on our roads. I'm just trying to figure out how to save our taxpayers' money if there's any way to budget more than just one year. That's all.
There's a balance.
Yeah, yep.
Mr. Chair, third time. Audie, he is right. Over a period of time, we did not spend additional money. We did not go out and borrow because we didn't have the money to work with, period. The money was spent for everything else that the county had to do. So, the board evidently didn't have the courage at that time to go out and borrow the money, and I agree with them. And I think Al Ranka is completely right, that it's been neglected. My concern is, and I'm not defending what happened in the past, my concern is the future, who's going to pay for this? That's my concern. I would second what Heather is saying, is that it's an awful chunk to chew. It really is. Thank you.
I wish Al was here tonight. Actually, he could answer some of these questions, but we still have this resolution in front of us to pass for the $6.6 million, which basically, I think IT has already spent their million or so of it, or something.
There are half a million.
There are half a million.
You've got the list, if anybody wanted.
You spent some of yours already, or the biggest chunk of it, so it's actually.
And Highway has two.
Highway is already spending theirs, so it's.
Dick, I left on your desk, if you wanted to pass them both ways, of what this $6 million is made up of.
So, let me get a question. So, the next time we do this, is there going to be a way we could say maybe we could do two years, three years? I mean, this is nothing.
Absolutely. I think we're kind of too late in the game for this year, but wouldn't you say for?
For spending this year, I guess you'd have to talk to the Highway Department and what they could handle, so that's less about what you can physically go borrow and what you can physically put into the ground, I suppose, so.
We could spend $10 million a year, but this, you know, this, we just.
You've got extra.
Well, you actually, it's 4.3. We're keeping $5 million, but it's 4.3.
That one. Oh, it's common.
So, anyway.
This one we don't need. That's our $43 million. He wanted the payback on the $43 million.
There's too much talking. Judy wants to talk.
Could we just, like, be quiet in this meeting? There's, like, so much side talking.
Ms. Chair.
I guess part of my disappointment in all of this comes with the fact that we have department heads spending monies that we don't technically have yet. I also don't know with executive finance how they handle that type of thing, but that's definitely when you're looking at the budget and you're knowing how much money you have every year. If we haven't even technically borrowed this and approved it, how is it even in an account to even be spent?
It's, actually, this is already in the budget from last year. It's already in there.
Adopted budget.
We just didn't borrow, we said the fund will come from future borrowing when we did the budget.
Because we did talk about this at the end of last year and decided it would be a decision for the new board.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And we just delayed it, basically like you said, we're saving interest we didn't take until absolutely needed, and we saved the six-months' interest in the meantime, rather than borrowing it upfront. Ms. Nutter.
Is it too, I wasn't clear on your answer to the question that Heather and Todd, that Supervisor Fritsch and Supervisor Todd brought up. Is it too late to bring another resolution forward for two more years, $12 million? I mean, I guess either you, either one of you can.
I mean, or do we have to wait until January, or?
I'm thinking it might have to go into next year's.
Next year's budget.
Next year's budget, because this budget, we already approved last November, and now we're just.
Okay, so we'd have to do it in, we'd have to do something in the budget in August that would be for 2023.
23, 24, 25.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see what that infrastructure bill does. Maybe that will get us through a year or two. So, let's see if we can see those numbers before we move forward with anything else.
But this one is kind of necessary, because this is already part of the budget. Yeah.
Could we, like, not talk during this meeting unless we have permission? I'm sorry to word it out, but it's really distracting when everybody's talking.
So, anyway, back to this resolution. Any questions on this resolution? Which allows him to go ahead with the figures he has in this proposal here. It's actually $6.6 million at 2.9 something percent. Call a question? Yes.
Can we throw one more thing in, that $85,000?
He did mention that.
I did speak to him, yeah.
That we are planning on putting to?
Additional project funds, yes.
Oh, you just, okay.
Yeah.
We kind of talked about that earlier today, and we thought maybe that could go to the highway also. So, maybe that'll be a decision that'll be made by exec then?
More likely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody had this, you chose what the loan is actually going for. Everybody get that one? And then, so, we're actually voting on the resolution. Mr. Sashia called for the question. So, we're voting on this resolution to approve the notes, or the promissory notes, an amount of $6.6 million. And we had a motion and a second.
Yes, we did.
So, this requires a voice vote.
Roll call.
I'm in a roll call.
It's not a voice. It's a roll call. It's money.
There's some money in this vote.
It's money.
Yeah, roll call.
Tell me when, are you ready now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, actually, Stacy Klein is first. Richard Sashia?
Yes.
Lori Severson?
Yes.
Andy Todd?
Yes.
Heather Fritsch?
Yes.
Kevin Adams?
Yes.
Dick Miller?
Yes.
David Orsh?
No.
John Austin?
Yes.
Riley Foltz?
No.
Robert Becker?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Kellen Nelson?
Yes.
David Larson?
Yes.
Jeanne Nutter?
Yes.
Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Bridget Turner?
Yes.
15 to 2. It only needed simple majorities.
Chair.
Chair.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Highway Department and IT Department appreciate it.
And the Chair.
And the Chair, yeah.
And maintenance.
And maintenance, oh, yeah.
Can we recommend to do something?
And what?
Could the.
Right, I see Kurt Burner is here from Samuel's Group. He was busy earlier days, but he's here now, so calling Kurt Burner to bring us up to date on the Justice Center.
Evening, everyone. Good to see you tonight. I almost didn't show up. I went through Pigeon Falls, saw a ballgame going on, wanted to watch it. No, that's not why I'm late. So, my update will be brief. Project is moving along well. I'm sure most of you can see the progress that's there. We've been averaging between 30 to 40 tradespeople there each day. And what you're going to see to continue there is masonry walls. That's obviously, we're building a justice center, so a lot of masonry walls going up. Infrastructure, mechanical, electrical, frames are going in. The floor was poured on the second floor of the geopod a few weeks ago, and things are moving along well. We had a safety lunch last week to celebrate 200 days without a lost-time accident. We were a little behind, so I think we were, like, at 2:25, something like that. So, things are safe and progressing along well. So, don't have much to report other than that. Any questions for the project?
Any questions for anybody?
I got one. Just rumor, rumor has it.
Sure, let's hear it.
I want to clarify what they have to say.
Sure.
All the concrete that was poured throughout the whole time, they could have poured a full, 100% footing underneath if they did it all at one time, for the same amount of money.
No.
Okay, I'm just throwing that out there. That's what people are talking about in our triple-county, well.
So, we could have poured, what you're hearing is, we could have poured a mat slab under that entire foundation, the same money in the same amount of time?
Yes.
No, not at all.
Because of all the ins and outs, you know, them coming in, making a little bit, pouring a little bit, next day, do it again.
No. Here's the opportunity that contractors have, is when you put out documents for contractors to bid, the means and methods in regards to how they decide they're going to place that material is on them. So, they get to determine how much they pour, how little they pour, when they pour, but they have to honor their bid from a cost perspective, okay? Last time, there was a question in regards to winter conditions, and winter condition is always something you have to ask of, "Do we go, do we not go?" And I will stand behind the position that we took to get a lower bid earlier and deal with winter conditions. We saved four times the amount of money that we would have unless we would have delayed that. So, those are great questions, and they should be challenged. But to answer your question, there wouldn't have been a savings there in regards to the approach that's there. So, rumors are wonderful if you.
Well, we just got to answer the rumors, so that's why.
Yeah, and I have to tell you, you have a great group of contractors here. I mean, and when you think about the contractors that could have been on a job, because that's one of the things in public settings that you have, is that you don't know who's going to be low, right? And if they meet the qualifications, if they can provide you a P&amp;P bond, you have to give them the work. You've got some great contractors on the job, and things have been moving along well.
So, you're saying if maybe those contractors that didn't get the bid might be saying something like that?
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to venture a guess where the rumors are, but they.
Everybody's an armchair architect contractor right now.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But we got to communicate. We got to communicate with the people. They don't understand, so.
Absolutely, yeah. Anytime you do a public project, it's under scrutiny, and all you can do is, you know, tell them, "We're looking out for the county's best interest." And, you know, markets dictate some things in regards to what you have to do, but we're And, you know, markets dictate some things in regards to what you have to do, but we're not going to compromise quality here in regards to the facility, so.
I think the last time you were here, I talked about updating the website, and some of this information could go there, you know, but it's up to people to go and get the information that they need. And we have a great website about our building with a ton of information there.
Yep.
And how decisions were made, and, you know, people have to take responsibility for finding things out.
Right. I did have our team start on that. What we're doing is progress photos that's there, which will be kind of an explanation of what's happening. We've got some great aerials, so you can see that the progress that's there. Those are some cool shots that are there. I'm not sure if they have it updated yet, but it's under process, so it'll be there.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker.
Yeah.
When they signed a, when did you sign the contract for this?
When did I sign the contract?
Well, the county and.
I think the first time I was engaged for the first phase of our services was 2019, and then the project wasn't approved.
Well, when did they accept the bids from, the bid?
Oh, it's been ongoing.
Yeah, first, first bid pack, I think, was in July of last year.
So when you, when they signed the bid for the whole project, all the subcontractors' prices were locked in?
For that, for that first bid pack, we had a first bid pack, which was the early foundation, the excavation. There was, first of all, there was the demo where we took the old school down. That was the first one. Then we came back and we did the utilities, we did the excavation, and the footing and foundation, and then the balance of that was the balance of the contracts that were there. So all the masonry and all that was.
So everybody's bid is what they're locked into?
Correct.
Even if price, okay. I was trying to get clarity, thank you.
Now, I will tell you, they're locked in. It doesn't mean that contractors don't come and ask for money, and it's happened already. And we've done our best to mitigate that, to take them back to what they bid on, right? But you're dealing with a market right now where contractors are feeling it. Let's be real about it, okay? So they're going to ask. It doesn't mean that we have to give.
My kids ask for a lot, too.
No, right. But, but.
But I know, just, but I just want to make sure that that was.
I want to give you real data of what's happening in the world. Most contractors may have bid a project, and when they have to bid a project, they get information or bids from their vendors and subs, right? Some of those contractors are going back to those vendors and subs, and those vendors and subs aren't honoring the number. They're not. They don't have to. They're not bound to. But the contractors are bound to you to honor those numbers. So I want you to have the understanding of where the contractors are, right? We, we've got to understand what's going on in the market and be fair. I'm not saying that we, that there's handouts there. We need to take each request as it is and take them back to the documents, but.
Would those contractors be so willing, if the prices would drop, to give us a discount?
No.
No, I, but it's always one way, it seems, and we're the ones that pay. And I just want to get clarity, because like Andy says, people ask questions. And I think it'll help once you get your website up. And, but people do, they hear things, and they just, I just want to get the truth out there, so.
And then I just want to say, too, that, like Supervisor Nutter was saying, we're at, we get the privilege to ask you. These questions aren't necessarily going to be answered on this website that people got to do their research on. So, I mean, we still, they still want to know. I mean, that's why I think we got elected, and so we can talk to the people in our area.
Absolutely.
You know, so a website ain't everything. It's just not, so.
And that's really the way that our local government is set up, right? You guys are getting all the fine details, and then it's your responsibility to work with your constituents. I mean, it puts a heavy burden on you, right? But that's what you're elected to do.
Mr. Orsh.
I'll go to the website and check it out, just so you know. But can you give us a little bit of a timeline for those of us newer to the board here?
Yeah, were you not here last month?
I was not, so I apologize. But can we, real quick overview?
Sure.
When's it going to be dried in? What's the next big phases? And what do we need to be looking out for in the next six months or a year?
So our goal is to have you occupy by fall of next year. So what you're going to end up seeing is, they're going to get all of that masonry up, so we can get the structure and start to do with the interiors, and they're going to drop back and start doing that exterior brick. So from the perspective of occupancy, we're looking for fall of 2023. When you start seeing some of the key components, we've got pre-cast that's coming for that second floor in July, and then the roof structure is going to be behind there. What we're dealing with right now is some steel lead times, because the steel is bar joists and deck up on top. Those are a longer lead time of what's happening in our world, so we're targeting that fall side, so that we are all dried in before the snowballs start hitting us in the rear end this winter, and we can start working on those finishes over, over this next calendar year. That's what we're targeting. Right now, everything, all indications point to that we're not dealing with long lead time materials that won't be here. I'm not going to tell you that we won't be surprised in a month or so if that happens, but it's something, those things that are happening in the world. Kind of a timeframe of, of when we're looking at occupancy, so then we'll have to look at the move, and what that move is in a shakedown, in a jail. It's called a shakedown process. The building will be done-done, right? It'll look like it's done, it is done from the outside, but the DOC has a requirement where for about six to eight weeks, the sheriff's staff actually have a dry run in that facility. So what they do is, they, we have a transition team right now, where the sheriff has assigned some of their staff to write new policies. They're going to write entirely new policies for that jail and how it functions. And then, once we get it done, they will function from that control center to make sure that all the door controls work. It's essentially a commissioning process for that portion of the project. So you're going to see that earlier than that fall timeframe. It'll look done-done, you'll say, why aren't we moving in? And we're going to say, we got to get through shakedown. So the DOC will come through and inspect all of that, so. I did offer, and I've done this at the other counties that I'm working on, for you new board members, it's tough to give you all the details here. If you want to have a one-on-one, let me know. I've done that with a couple of board members from other counties, and it, it's about an hour to hour and a half time, but you can ask me all the details of what's went on, because you're coming in and it's fresh to you. There's probably details that you can ask me that won't come up here, but you can ask me outside of that, and I can give you the details of how we got here. So I'd be more than happy to do that. I want to get you as informed as possible, so. Yep.
Any other questions? No, well, thank you, Kurt.
Okay, thanks a lot. Sorry I was late.
No problem. Anytime. Appreciate the report. Item two under 6.2, support designation of the Mississippi Trail within the limits of the Tremplow County.
Whereas at its March 2022 meeting, the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors approved a resolution supporting the designation and development of the Mississippi River Trail route through portions of Tremplow County. Whereas the designation also required approval from other municipalities in Tremplow County, and whereas after approval of the resolution by the county board, the route of the proposed trail was modified as set forth in the attached map. And whereas due to the modified route, Resolution 2022-0301 needs to be modified to reflect the proposed changes. Now be it resolved that the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors hereby expressly approves and supports the designation and development of the Mississippi River Trail along the following route. Southbound, Wisconsin 35 from West County Line south to the intersection with the Great River State Trail, near the intersection with County Trunk Highway P. Turn right and proceed south on the Great River State Trail to the intersection with Wisconsin 35. Turn right and proceed south on Wisconsin 35 to the intersection with Wisconsin 35 Third Street. Turn left and proceed south on Wisconsin 35 to the intersection with the Great River State Trail. Turn right and proceed south on the Great River State Trail to the South County Line. Northbound, it's just the reverse of that, but it's Tremplow, Great River State Trail from the South County Line north to the intersection with Wisconsin 35 Third Street. Turn left and proceed north on Wisconsin 35 to the intersection with Wisconsin 35 Main Street. Turn right and proceed north on Wisconsin 35 to the intersection with the Great River State Trail. Turn left and proceed north on the Great River State Trail to the intersection with Wisconsin 35, near the intersection with County Trunk Highway P. Turn left and continue north on 35, Wisconsin 35 to the West County Line. Introduced by County Board Chair, John Austin.
Motion, my Nutter. Second. Second by Turner. Mr. Turner.
And now you want to know why, right?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. They made a change, so that's why.
It was actually the village of Tremplow wanted the road to go through more of their downtown, because it would have gone on the bike trail and missed the whole downtown. So when they adopted their resolution, they made it go downtown. And so we had to change our designation then. So that's basically what it is.
Well, that's good. That makes, that's even better.
Yeah, go right to that intersection there as you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr..
It sounds like a real complicated thing in resolution, but it's not that bad, though. So is there any other comments? If not, this just requires a ye or nay vote. All of the favors, signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Nay? Let's carry. Support, okay, number four, George Brandt, recognition.
What?
Get it? Which one did I miss?
Two, three.
Oh, three. Support the creation of the statistical, statistical boundaries for the North Greenbelt Port. Is that you?
It's going to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas the collection of waterborne commerce statistics pertaining to rivers, harbors, and waterways, and the compilation and publication of such data by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are required by federal law. Whereas creation of the statistical boundaries of the Northern Greenbelt Port statistical area more accurately reflect the regional waterborne commerce activity and increased tonnage recorded by the Waterborne Commerce Statistics Center and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Navigation and Civil Works Decision Support Center, ranking the port statistical area among the top 100 inland ports in the United States, further supporting local economic development and regional transportation planning. Whereas the creation of the green, Northern Greenbelt Port statistical area would better differentiate the Upper Mississippi River and Great Lakes Ports data in both Wisconsin and Minnesota. Whereas the proposed creation of the statistical boundaries will provide the opportunity for marketing and investment opportunities, which could lead to job creation and economic growth for the designated port statistical area. Now therefore be it resolved that Tremplow County Board of Supervisors supports the port statistical boundary creation of the Northern Green Belt Port statistical area between the Upper Mississippi River confluence with the St. Croix River and the Wisconsin River to include the entire riverfront on the Upper Mississippi River. Said support extends for statistical data reporting purposes only and not to any waterways organization or further control of the Upper Mississippi River, nor does the port statistical area designation impact any existing or future public port, terminal, or economic development authorities, nor does it require commitment of any financial resources. And it's introduced by County Board Chair, John Austin.
Second. Was my Nutter, second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions? And you're here to talk about, I assume.
I'll try.
All right.
So Shane Goplin, Farm, 12 miles.
Oh, push the button.
Yeah, push.
That one?
Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Just like a cell phone. So Shane Goplin, I farm about 12 miles north of here. I also am the Secretary Treasurer of the Wisconsin Corn Growers Association. So this in a nutshell, Mr. Miller, I want to just go right off of what you said about some of the comments of neglect and needs, and like Paul stated, this is not going to cost Tremplow County a dime. So that's why it's easier to come to you, and it's not going to cost anything. But. So what it is, is Wisconsin is the only state on the Mississippi River without a nationally recognized port. So by introducing a port statistical area, what that means by definition is that the Corps of Engineers will collect the data within this port area, and this port area would run basically from Lock Four to Lock Nine. And that would be from Red Wing to Prairie to Sheen. It would take all the cargoes within them boundaries. And right now, they do not report that to the Arm, or the Corps of Engineers. With not reporting that and not being recognized as a port statistical area, it's a tongue twister, isn't it, Paul?
It was.
By not reporting that, we're not recognized. We don't have hard numbers on it, but if it was recognized as a national or a port statistical area, we, they're projecting or anticipating that we would be, that area would be in the top 100 ports in the nation. It would be somewhat equivalent with the Port of Miami and the Port of Brownsville, Texas, just to, you know, and it's, it's kind of, you know, a guesstimate or whatever. The other thing, when these areas have been put together in other parts of the nation, down in Illinois, on the Illinois River, right now, the funding that the ports don't get nationally funding, are locks and dams, they've been neglected for many years. And not only me as a producer, but I would also say Tremplow County relies on the locks and dams, because what percent of your salt comes up the Mississippi River? And when you get to St. Louis, then you have all sorts of locks, and we have, just within, what, 30 miles, we have three locks, and it's a real pain to get up there. But the funding dramatically increases when we're nationally recognized. You know, it goes from just private up to national. So basically, what we're trying to do is we need 11 counties. There are seven in Wisconsin and four in Minnesota, and we will be going to all 11 counties. All 11 counties have to agree to sign this resolution to deem that Tremplow County is a port statistical area, basically saying that the locks and dams in the river system are very important to us. You said that we need to improve roads. I agree, and bridges. But the locks and dams, that is our gateway and to success for the future for not only agriculture, but whatever. So anytime that we can possibly get more funding is a plus for us. Also, the infrastructure bill, there is money allocated for this until it runs out, obviously. Is it guaranteed that, that if we, if you sign this resolution, that it will pass? It's not guaranteed, but it's highly probable. From what I heard today was, it's not, you know, it's not hard to become a port statistical area. It's basically, they're just keeping data.
Thank you, Shane. Is there any questions to Mr. Goplin? Well, here in town, we'll just.
Tough crowd.
Call for the vote. Ye or nay? Voice vote?
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to be.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Unless they changed the numbering systems since I was a kid, Lock, Lock Four is at Elma, not at Red Wing.
Is Red Wing number three?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry. I stand corrected. No, I'm, I apologize.
There you go. All those in favor of the support and the creation of statistical boundaries of the Northern Green Belt Port statistical area, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? There ain't none, it's carried. Thank you, Mr. Goplin.
Thank you, everyone.
Now we can go down to the fast ones. Recognition from Mr. George Brandt.
Whereas George Brandt has represented District Six as a member of the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors from 1996 to 2008, and from 2010 to 2022. And whereas Mr. Brandt has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplow County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his 24 years of service, his counsel, and do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his 24 years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Turner, seconded by Mr. Becker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Douglas Winters, recognition.
Whereas Douglas Winters has represented District Two as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2002 to 2022. Whereas Mr. Winters has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his 20 years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stacia.
Second by Mr. Schreiner.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Michelle Haynes.
Whereas Michelle Haynes has represented District Nine as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2002 to 2022. Whereas Ms. Haynes has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly, publicly express their appreciation of her 20 years of service, her counsel, and all the efforts which rendered her an invaluable participant in county government in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made part of the official record of this session in recognition of her service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Horsh.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Foltz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Sally Miller, recognition.
Whereas Sally Miller has represented District Three as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2012 to 2022. Whereas Ms. Miller has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of her 10 years of service, her counsel, and all the efforts which rendered her an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of her service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Motion by Mr. Adams. Seconded by Mr. Foltz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Curtis Scoyen, recognition.
Whereas Curtis Scoyen has represented District Sixteen as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2012 to 2022. Whereas Mr. Scoyen has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his 10 years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Which one got it first?
Mr. Johnson.
Then it must come over here, huh?
Yeah, maybe it's a Ms. Turner's second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Timothy Zieglin, recognition.
Whereas Timothy Zieglin has represented District Twelve as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2014 to 2022. Whereas Mr. Zieglin has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his eight years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Schreiner. Seconded by Ms. Nutter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carry. Charles Wallach, recognition.
Whereas Charles Wallach has represented District Eleven as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2015 to 2022. Whereas Mr. Wallach has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his seven years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of this official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Foltz.
No, it was Becker.
Oh, Becker, and seconded by Mr. Foltz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Beth Killian.
Whereas Beth Killian has represented District Seven as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2016 to 2022. Whereas Ms. Killian has been a valuable member and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of her six years of service, her counsel, and all the efforts which rendered her an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of her service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion by Turner, seconded by Nutter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Randall Tulson, recognition.
Whereas Randall Tulson has represented District Eight as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2018 to 2022. And whereas Mr. Tulson has been a valuable member of, and has served on many county committees, boards, and commissions, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his four years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
Mr. Miller, motion. And seconded by Mr. Foltz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? It's carried. Rick Nimitz.
Whereas Rick Nimitz has represented District One as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2018 to 2021. Whereas Mr. Nimitz has been a valuable member and has served on various county committees. Now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation, appreciation of his years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of his official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
By Todd. Seconded by Mr. Stacia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Joe Feltes, recognition.
Whereas Joe Feltes has represented District Five as a member of the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors from 2020 to 2022. And whereas Mr. Feltes has been a valuable member and has served on various county committees, now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors do hereby publicly express their appreciation of his years of service, his counsel, and all the efforts which rendered him an invaluable participant in county government, in behalf of the citizens of Tremplaw County. Be it further resolved that this resolution be made a part of the official record of this session in recognition of his service. Introduced by John Austin, County Board Chair.
So moved as my...
Motion by Mr. Adams. Seconded by Mr. Foltz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carried. Hey, thank you. That was kind of a mouthful.
There were 11 of them.
And environment land use. Rezone exclusive Ag II to industrial from Lambright, Montana.
Whereas Felty Lambright Jr. and Mary Lambright, landowners, petitioners, Blair, Wisconsin, has requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Preston for the purpose of adding and, adding on to an existing building for the purpose of roll forming steel. Whereas the rezone is on approximately two acres, more or less, and whereas the public here, a public hearing was held pursuant to Section 59.69, parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes. Whereas the town of Preston, Preston supports the rezone request. Whereas the Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from exclusive agriculture two, EA two, to industrial, I, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated. Introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Riley Foltz, Stacy Klein, David Larson, Kellen Nelson, Randy Severson, Anthony Munson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foltz, seconded by...
No, it was...
Oh, Mr. Horsh.
Mr. Horsh.
I made a motion to approve, but somebody must have gotten to the vote.
Okay, Snutter for the motion, Mr. Horsh for the second.
There we go.
Okay, discussion.
I just have a question.
He's here.
Are you back there? I'm ready. I have a question.
You'll have to come up here to the mic, though.
I, I thought this had already been approved and I forgot it was that land use meeting. I knew I'd seen you before, so... I thought, geez, didn't we do that?
I thought it was him. Yeah, I thought it was.
Well, we want both.
You want both. Well, I'd...
Both of you.
Yeah. Both. Yes.
Question. Since Felty's project is in, is in my district, I would like to ask if, if you had any comments from people in the area in reference to the rezone?
I don't believe we had anyone at the meeting that...
And there wasn't anything in writing, then?
No, no.
Nothing at all?
No comments.
Okay, so, so the neighborhood was, was...
Yeah, we, we didn't have any...
Notified, I would imagine, like they normally are.
Adjacent property owners were notified and there was a public, public hearing notice in the newspaper.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you want to explain what the business is out there? Just maybe get some advertising in here.
I'm Felty Lambright. The purpose for the building is to roll form steel. We're not even in competition with the one in Fleckrick. This is, he does the 29 gauge. We are in the heavier steel for 26 gauge. And in our family, we have, my son-in-law does a lot of buildings, does a lot of traveling, and he's buying all his buildings from United Steel, or General Steel, and that's coming from different states. And he just seen an opportunity where we could have that business right here in Tremplaw County.
Do you have any idea how many people will be so...
Uh, we are, for employment, we are looking at, starting out with six. There's seven machines coming, which is close to a million dollars in, in machines. So we're going to start out with, you know, obviously it's going to be just me and him to start with, to get everything up and running, but we're hoping to deploy at least six people in the first year.
Good.
And we're hoping to be up and running by September 1st.
Good.
That's our goal.
Thank you, Felty.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we call? This requires a roll call vote. Roll call vote.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Stacia.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Daniel Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Carry. Okay, amendment to Tremplaw County's subdivision ordinance, chapter 24.
Where...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas the, whereas the county subdivision ordinance was last amended on January 4th of 1999. Whereas the county board rules authorize the Environment and Land Use Committee to prepare and submit proposed changes to the subdivision ordinance for approval and adoption by the county board. Whereas a public hearing was held on May 4th, 2022 pursuant to Section 59.69, parentheses five, parentheses E, two, Wisconsin statutes regarding the amendments to the Tremplaw County subdivision ordinance as a part of the county's comprehensive code of ordinances, a copy of which has been on file in the Office of the Department of Land Management and the Office of the County Clerk and available for public inspection for at least two weeks prior to the adoption of this resolution. Whereas the Environment and Land Use Committee has determined that the proposed amendments to the Tremplaw County subdivision ordinance is needed and in the best interest of health, safety, and welfare of county residents, and would better protect county land and resources. Now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors hereby adopts the, and approves the attached amendments to the subdivision ordinance. Introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Riley Foltz, Stacy Klein, David Larson, Kellen Nelson, Randy Severson, Anthony Munson.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Foltz. Any discussion? Nothing? Well, just call a roll, then.
You don't have to answer any questions.
Nobody, nobody's, nobody's question answered, we'll just call a roll.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Stacia.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Number three. Amendment to Tremplaw County zoning ordinance, chapters three, four, and 18.
Whereas the county zoning ordinance has, was last amended on January 28th, 2019. Whereas the county board rules authorize the Environment and Land Use Committee to prepare and submit proposed changes to the zoning ordinance for approval and adoption by the county board. Whereas a public hearing was held on May 4th, 2022 pursuant to Section 59.69, parentheses five, parentheses E, two, Wisconsin statutes regarding the proposed amendments to the Tremplaw County zoning ordinance, chapters three, four, and 18. A copy of which has been on file in the Office of the Department of Land Management and the Office of the County Clerk and available for public inspection for at least two weeks prior to the adoption of this resolution. Whereas Environment and Land Use Committee has determined that the proposed amendments to the Tremplaw County zoning ordinance is needed and is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of county residents and would be better, and would better protect county land and resources. Now be it resolved that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors hereby adopts and approves the attached amendments to the Tremplaw County zoning ordinance. Introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Riley Foltz, Stacy Klein, David Larson, Kellen Nelson, Randy Severson, and Anthony Munson. Motion to approve.
By Mr. Larson.
Second.
Seconded by...
I, it was, it was a tie.
Ms. Turner. Yes, Ms. Nutter.
Um...
Would you like Mike to answer your question?
Yeah, Mike. You had a public hearing, did people tell you?
We had at least one, just one. Discuss some rules that we were not suggesting, and that's the public frontage rules. We did not recommend any changes to that at that time. So the discussion went through and the committee recommended approval of the changes and directed staff to research the issue that was brought up in comments and bring back to committee.
Carry. Any other questions or comments? If you have none, we'll call a roll.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Stacia.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
Have to fix that one, he's only got one L in there. David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Day. Adam C., members' claims.
Okay. Whereas the Audit Committee has audited the following claims and recommend that they be allowed as follows. John Austin, $895.08. Kevin Adams, $117.55. George Brandt, $209.67. Beth Killian, $202.54. Stacy Klein, $262.32. Sally Miller, $1,171.18. Kellen Nelson, $180.42. Jeanie Nutter, $132.76. Richard Stacia, $160.84. Dan Schreiner, $200. Kurt Scoyen, $271.97. Randy Tullosen, $262.01. Bridget Turner, $262.32. Chuck Wallach, $402.68. Douglas Winters, $320.51. Timothy Zieglin, $137.44. Total per diems, $4,200. Total expenses, $1,345.76. Grand total, $5,545.76. Now be it resolved that the claims be allowed as shown, introduced by Audit Committee, John Austin, Stacy Klein, Richard Stacia.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Foltz. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Turner. Okay, all those.
Oh, no.
I gotta do a roll call.
You're supposed to ask questions.
Yes, any questions? No questions, go ahead for the roll call.
Okay. Lori Severson. Andy Todd. Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Horst.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yes.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Stacia.
Yes.
Seventeen to zero.
Now, I said I was going to have Mr. Adams come up and talk about our training we had the other day, would you like to do that yet?
We do have a couple people that haven't had the training yet, but they will in June. I think it's, are you? Who are the two? Yeah. Mr. Horst and Ms. Fritsch.
Yeah, we had our Wisconsin Counties Association training, and that went really very well. For those of you that have missed it, whether it was in person or virtually, I think you missed, it was a great opportunity, especially for us newer board members that are new to elected positions. I've had government positions, but this is my first elected government position. I'm usually more behind the scenes or government employees, so, which is similar but different, so I think that was a wonderful conference. So, any questions?
No questions, but thank you for your. Go ahead.
Yes, I did.
There was four of us that went, four of us went. Stacy. Hadi and Kevin and myself. We all went together to Eau Claire. So, it went good.
What? Oh, you had a look on your face like. I already, oh, you. I was just going to announce that if anybody wants to, I have to just send that in pretty fast here for the, because it starts June 6th, and it's every, is it every Monday? It's for. I think it's just a little over an hour, isn't it? Maybe it is two hours? It's four weeks, four Mondays in a row, but if you want to, I've got the forms in my office, you all got forms also, but if you want to fill that out and get to me so I get it paid, has to be paid seven days before the thing starts. All the in-person ones are too late now.
You missed, you missed out on the lunch.
Yep. Well, I think WCA already has the information, so I'll check with them to, because they will be sending it to you to get the link, yep. And Andy, is there anybody else that might be interested in that? Two hours, Kellen?
It's two hours, four times.
Yes.
It's a eight hours. Anyway, it went very well. Thank you, Kevin, for your report.
Lori?
Any other announcements? Do you have anything? I did hand out this gypsy moth thing, it's basically Dr. Stacia's area, Lori Severson's area, and Andy Todd's area, so I gave them a copy of the letter, and I'm sure they're supposed to have mailed it to all the residents who will be affected too, so. That's probably sometime in June this will be happening. You go ahead.
Spring. And they don't call it the gypsy moth anymore, it's now the spongy moth.
Yeah.
Same moth, but.
Anyway, go ahead.
Can we explain this?
I think all the residents will probably, but there's, at some point, the plane's going to be flying over, somebody's going to complain to you, what's this plane doing flying over, and so at least you know what it is.
Well, some of them know what it is.
Yeah.
And they're not happy about it, so I just want to know what to explain, how it moves into their crops, if somebody has organic crops.
In that information that you got, there should be contact information.
Just have them, okay.
It should be, and they're supposed to have sent cards and notice to all of, but in that letter, in your packet for you three, because it's your area that's being affected, I put it in there and I should be able to answer questions just off of that. Executive Finance Committee Budget Update and Sales Tax. That should be in the packet.
The sales tax and general fund were mailed to you in your packets, the budget update is on your desk. If you have any questions, I guess this is a new one for most everybody, too, is that I do that report every month showing where you are on your budgets for every department, every account.
All right. COVID-19 Committee have been informed today that they're going to.
We don't know that part, but they're not reporting tonight.
So, and they're talking about ending it too, right? Is that my understanding?
Aaron Newberry is now the chair of that committee, and they're talking about disbanding, so they think their purpose is over. So, but they haven't had their meeting to decide that yet, so.
Okay. You got a note from, thank you.
Yeah, every county board meeting, I send out the WebEx to everybody. Didn't get to do it to you this time because all your computers were sitting here, so, but next time, they should come through on those. But I sent to Kurt Burner and I sent to John Kane and Debbie Floss at the newspaper and anybody who's on the agenda, I send to. Anyway, John Kane then wrote back to me and said that he's retired, but he was looking forward to making occasional stops to walk the site. You all have been great to work with and for. John Kane is the head architect of the building that's being built right now. As we said, he made his money, now he retired.
Okay. Item nine, OAK 10, Inspector Clerk to pay mileage in per diem. Looking for a motion. Motion by Ms. Turner, seconded by Ms. Nutter. Is that right? Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing done, call a roll.
Riley Foltz.
Aye.
Bob Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.